Oh.
Lost my screen.
Oh.
No, you're fine.
I can see.
Move it wherever you want.
My own.
You're gonna spread out as far as you're.
I could be kicking my back like this.
I like to jump backwards.
One of the reasons why I'm here.
You or.
Yeah, exactly.
All right.
Yeah, the more the closer you get.
I could do better.
We need a huge.
There you go. I want changes.
Yeah, Ed, Ed has not improved. Still, you can't say.
Go with this out sometime when he's talking. Good idea.
Or can you, George?
No, no, just going down to.
All right.
Share your.
Can we move this between us?
I guess.
Will these move?
I can slide.
You guys ready?
A little bit. That's about as far as.
Then. Ready?
Yep.
All right, so we will go ahead, call to order. City Council Regular Business Meeting for Thursday, April eighteenth, twenty twenty four. It is six P M. Lindsay, who's the things called the role?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Cool.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Minekey.
Here.
Mayor Phillips.
I am here as well. We do have a forum. At this point in time, I'd ask that you rise and say the pledge allegiance with. Item number three is approval of the agenda. Would anybody like to move any of the consent agenda items to the regular agenda?
Motion.
Got a motion to approve the agenda.
Sorry.
Okay, okay. Motion by Livingston, seconded by Brown. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same. Motion carries. Item number four is a dedicated work session. So this dedicated work session is for mayor and city council. Regular council meeting will begin following this work session. So tonight, we have an overview of zoning ordinance review and update process. So Luke has a presentation. Luke, you got the floor.
I do. Also, I mentioned to Jackie earlier, I'm a little under the weather today, so I've cut this down a little bit for you all. Look at you guys.
Good.
Uh. So. Office is always open if you want to come talk zoning stuff. Um, so yeah, I just got a quick presentation to run through some things. Um, and then just have a discussion about what we're gonna do going forward. Um, run through some just real brief history of zoning and its purpose. Uh, talk about uh this idea of doing an audit of our current zoning ordinance. The update and re.
Don't change our slides, please.
Update rewrite of the current zoning ordinance.
I need this as a guy.
And then really just talk about what kind of involvement we want to have uh from a council standpoint. Um, so zoning itself, uh, really, it looked at doing two different things historically, trying to protect property values and and private value and investment in land. And then also address public health concerns. So we track it all the way back one hundred and fifty years. Those are things that we've done for good and for bad all throughout the years. Both kind of developed over a parallel timeframe. Um, you can see there lots of different federal and state laws that happened over that time. In about the mid nineteen fifties, we did our first Norwalk zoning ordinance, and we used that for a long time with various amendments and things. In the late nineties, we did our kind of second big change to the zoning ordinance, and we've used that ever since with modifications and changes going forward. But uh most of the bones of what you see of the current zoning ordinance is from nineteen ninety eight. So we've had zoning for about a third of this timeline. Um, and we've been using our current zoning for going on thirty years now. So. Uh, zoning ordinance process typically review it after our comprehensive plan update. We do that because the state requires that any of our zoning actions are in conformance with our comprehensive plan. So you always want to make sure that those two line up. So we're legal in that. Uh, we want to make sure that we're uh have the regulations and guidelines uh that get the development that we want. And that we are achieving the city's goals that we put out through that comprehensive plan. And so here, we've just got lots of different goals and strategies that I'm clicking up on the screen here, things on housing, things, uh, lots of stuff on housing. Uh, using development wisely, um, improving our housing stock. And as you can see, it's just a lot of stuff, right? And this was all slides on its own. So I condensed it down to one for you guys.
That's great.
But it's a lot.
Watch on getting commercial.
This is a.
What's that?
I didn't see enough about getting.
Yeah, I click through. There's the, you know, provide guidance for future economic growth, that type of stuff. But the idea is, and and I didn't by any means put everything on there from the conference plane. It got to be a bit much.
Are you gonna show a little bit of Shift Creek?
We could take a sidebar, you know, sidebar, that'd be fun. Uh, but David's right, it's a lot of information to process. So we decided to pull it back and look at really, uh, when we're doing this audit and this process. What are we really trying to do? Mission of the city is to preserve and improve why people want to live and work in Norwalk. So we want to look at our codes. We want to look at all the stuff and make sure that it's doing that. Um, so the idea of this zoning audit is doing a review of our current zoning code. And kind of asking that question of all the different sections of this. Is it doing what we want? Is it preserving and improving why people want to live and work in Norwalk? Uh, that's just one thing. Other things we need can do during this zoning audit is identifying um things in the code that we already know are maybe problematic. Um, there's been discussions in the past about beekeeping and should we change that? Now, that would be something we could earmark i- i- in this zoning audit. Um, just from being the one that administers zoning code, I know there's lots of definitions that are a little problematic in that they have actual code requirements in the definition. We usually want the definition to define something and the code required to be to be within the code. So there are some things we want to do there. Um, and then just going back and looking at best practices. So I was just at the National Planning Conference. Spent a lot of time, one of the National Planning uh Associations uh main focuses, well, two, there are two main focuses uh right now are zoning reform and housing. And so what we're doing kind of fits well with that. And so reviewing some best practices on zoning and housing and how we could potentially include those. So that's that zoning audit standpoint. Rough estimate would be that would probably be about a year-long process. I mean, we're talking about two hundred and fifty pages of code, lots of detail and everything. Uh, the second step would be then the rewrite of the zoning ordinance based off of that audit. Um, that would give us a lot of detail, give us kind of a head start on what that would be. Um. Be a formal process. We'd go for RFP, hire consultant, all that, but we'd have all of this zoning audit work to be able to hand to them to say, these are our priorities. These are the things that we want to focus on. And we have that budgeted right now for the fiscal year twenty twenty six. So a year out. So in that process, audit and review. What I wanted to get a handle on was what kind of involvement council would like in that process? Do you want to be actively involved with it? You want me to bring items to the council every two weeks with? Here's some stuff I reviewed. Do you guys want to take a look at it and review things and give me your thoughts? It can really be any of that. Um, so just want to get a handle on that. On the rewrite process, that will be more of a formal RFP. Somebody will be doing stuff, will be, you know, doing a bunch of work, public hearings and all that stuff and reporting back to you as those things get done. So I feel like that process is a little more clear. Um, but just want to have a discussion about the zoning audit and what your involvement might want to be. So that's all I've got. I told you I would keep it quick.
You talked about even the potential of like a, an audit. Uh, task force.
Yeah, we could do a subcommittee work group. Um, lots of different things we could do. I plan on talking to the same idea with our planning and zoning commission on Monday and get their feedback on what involvement they may want. You could just kick it off to them and say, hey, you're a planning zoning commission, you guys do it all, and then we can report back to you at the end of it. Um.
Make a task force approach probably a pretty good one. Cause you could get some input and then maybe bring a product to the council for consideration, you know? Maybe a mix between council members and B and C, board people and staff. Just to talk.
So is that, is that something that you would want with the audit or with the review with the consultant?
Yeah, I don't know. Would it be helpful in the audit? Would it be helpful to have other people looking at what you're?
It could be. Um, it just, a lot of it just depends on how much you guys want to, I guess, influence your priorities prior to a consultant getting on board. I really view that audit as kind of a guideline saying, okay, consultant, we're bringing you on board. Uh, for example, we know that we want you to fix beekeeping in our ordinance, and we want to allow beekeeping in certain areas. So now go off and do that. Right? So this would be an opportunity to highlight, sorry to pick on you, Jim, uh, but uh, this would be an opportunity for you to highlight the areas that, you know, maybe you've seen over the years as we brought projects forward and we brought things forward that you might like to see changed, you know, and I won't speculate on what those areas could be, but certainly, you know, we've all seen projects come through that had different things on it that we liked or didn't like, and this is kind of an opportunity to identify those and kind of earmark them.
So would it be feasible to divide it up, say, over the next year into twelve parts? And once a month, bring us a part to consider. I, I, um, I'm not right. I don't have a strong opinion about whether or not it's a folk, uh, uh, subcommittee. Um, I would like. What happens sometimes with subcommittees is that that subcommittee comes to whatever agreement or doesn't, and then it comes before council and council's like.
I don't like it.
I don't like it.
Yep.
So I think that if we had a chance. I, I, again, I don't know how feasible that is, but like once a month to have one or two topics or three or, I don't know, ten, I don't know what it is.
Sure.
Right? To discuss, to digest, to review, and then have a little discussion and get some direction. That would be my vote.
I'd be okay with that, too. Just opportunity for input.
You think we have, when you say an audit, that's a comprehensive review of like everything. Do you think that's really necessary? I'm thinking of the man hours. You guys, and we're talking about limiting personnel, uh, an RFP for consultants. I'm just seeing dollar signs flash before my eyes, and I don't see the perceivable. What do we get out of this in twenty words or less that we couldn't go in? If we have some specific, and we all know what those specifics are, whether it's uh, chicken ranches or beet, whatever. We could go in and hammer some of those areas, I think, pretty easily without a full-fledged audit. What's your opinion?
We could. Um, I, my feeling is if we do that at this point in time, as I saw with the twenty sixteen update, we're gonna end up with a focus on one area, and we didn't focus on this other area, and this area is maybe older and doesn't jive as well with some of this stuff.
Okay.
I think at some point, you have to take kind of a bigger look at the whole thing. I don't disagree, like, that's a lot of work.
Was that another comprehensive plan? That's different than.
Yeah, it's different than comprehensive.
That's what I'm confused about.
Yeah, we're talking like the code regulations, definitions of things.
Okay.
Like where can a fence go? Where can, what's your setbacks on your house? What uh is the open space that you have? What's your parking standards and your minimum parking?
And I feel like often enough, there are issues, you know, like, um, you know, do we really need this building to have this kind of facade or, you know, right? Can't, we, nope, that's the, that's the zoning requirements, right? Can't, so I parking, garages, all of those things, I feel like at any time, there's a different issue. I've never heard of the beekeeping issue, so apparently it's an issue, right? I mean, there, and then there are things that we don't even know are issues. Because frankly, I'm not reading the zoning code, right? So I know it's a lot of work. We haven't touched it for since nine, thirty years. I think that it's worth the investment and the time to update comprehensively, right? We've done tweaks here and there. I know that, but I think it makes sense to me to put it, to do a comprehensive review of the whole thing. And if that means we break into, into a, a task force, you know, then so be it, but.
Yeah.
Couple, you get, you get outside help during the audit as well.
I hadn't planned on it. Um, maybe I don't quite know what I'm biting off yet with that, but um, no doubt, we do realize it's a lot of work, but um. My concern with bringing in somebody outside to do that at that level would be, I feel like we collectively know what we've dealt with. We know how it works. Staff knows what works and doesn't work when we're administering it. You all have known what worked and didn't work and what you didn't like with that. And you bring somebody from the outside. I mean, the best they're gonna help with is some of those best practice things and some of the newer things, and I think you really get that once you do the rewrite and you do the the bring on that consultant, you'll get it at that point in time. I don't know that you need to do it.
And I think you guys do a good job of, even if you think things ought to go one way, you do a good job of saying, you know, these are the options. This is what's available. This is the current practice. This is why we don't agree or do agree or whatever. I think you guys do a good job of giving us the options, even if you're slant as is one way, you know what I mean?
How many pages? Are, is the E and C or zoning regulations?
Two hundred plus, two hundred to three hundred.
Well, so. Not as best, but okay.
Yeah.
Twenty-five pages a month?
Yes. A couple of quick things. Um, Brian, going back to your question. I think that the audit that Luke is talking about, I think he said it very well, that if anybody that is best positioned to do that audit is us internally, even including council because of the different interests. That audit, just today, uh, Paris and I were talking about it. Because that audit will direct attention to certain code sections, he might be able to say to the consultant, you can leave one sections, one through eight alone. You don't even have to mess with them. That ultimately saves us money.
Okay.
Yeah, I would think it would help you to be able to focus on what you're using the outside research, you know? But thirty years is a long time. I don't think it's easy to take a look. That was a lot different thirty years.
There was our community was a lot different thirty years ago.
Yeah, right.
Very. That concept of um, kind of a chunk every month. Do you think that's at least to start off with? Maybe you could at least pull out a few sections and figure out how.
Yeah, you know, as I've tried to internalize how we would do that, I think that that, that makes sense, either whether that be a section or twenty-five pages or, you know.
Some logical break.
Yeah, some logical breakthrough. Obviously, some sections are bigger than others, so um.
That'd be something we could run by P and Z as well, then come to the council.
Yeah, sure.
By more eyes on it, different ideas.
And if it's once a month, there's your P and Z would have a chance to look at it.
And there's some people on P and Z having been on it. And admitting, I'm not an expert myself, who were really great at P and Z, who know their stuff, so. Like who were extremely helpful to me when I was on P and Z.
Well, the other piece of it, too, is the kind of education process for us as well as P and Z.
Yep.
That could be great. I'd probably involve the attorney, who's got something else to do.
Board anyway.
Cause he wants to put bees in there.
Yep.
Did you, did you get the questions answered that you wanted?
I think so. So I think, you know, what the plan would be, would be we'd come back with a first chunk of stuff to review and put that in a packet back to you guys to look at, and then we can.
I think with some direction to move on like, maybe some specific stuff to.
Yep, we can highlight, we can give you the whole. I've got my thoughts on how the, and I'll probably talk to you about how we'll actually format it, but, you know, we'll give you the, the section we went through so you can look at it, but then, you know, we'll do a staff report that'll highlight, hey, you know, we think these, these sections are where we're gonna focus a lot of effort on. We had a lot of discussion internally, cause I, I see Elliot and I sitting down doing a lot of review of that. Some back and forth and discussions and then.
And while I don't need it necessarily to be an action item on the agenda, if it's gonna be like a work session item, if we could have the packet in the agenda or whatever, so we have a chance before to review it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then we'll.
Now, previous Friday, not Wednesday.
We'll, I'll have to do a little bit of scheduling of it, cause I think the other route to do it as well, we'll talk with P and Z on Monday. I'm assuming they're gonna want to be involved as well. And so we'll have to just do some lineup of, take whatever we've done to P and Z, get their thoughts, then when we bring it to you guys, we can have what we've done as staff, what the P and Z's thoughts are on it, so. It might not be, end up being an ever, just because the meetings get weird, we might be a six-week thing, but we'll, we'll regularly get these back to you guys to, to review and.
The other thing is maybe doing that, you could, as it was P and Z about the process, you know, your, your plan on how to go about doing this. How much of a section, what time period, what, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Cause you, you know, in your mind from working with it, that there are certain areas that probably ought to draw more arrows and everything.
Yep.
You know?
Okay.
Thanks, Luke.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Feel better.
Deal.
Holly attends P and Z meetings typically.
Once in a while.
I feel like she, from an economic development perspective, would also be crucial to have a set of eyes on this. I know she's not gonna enjoy that, and I'm only saying this because she's not here tonight.
Engage her in that. We will. I've got an idea of how we pull these out in a Google form. You can just comment on them and send it to Jim. Everybody can. I have their say on different sections, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will still be on the meeting. I'm gonna go do the rest of it from my office, so you don't have to worry about me giving you anything. So.
All right.
Thanks, Luke.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number five, proclamations. This week, we have Arbor Day, April twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, uh, Building Safety Month. Is May twenty twenty-four, and we have mental health awareness month in May twenty twenty-four. Those will all be published on our in different social medias as they come up. Item six, welcome of guests in the public comment. Thanks for the public that's here. We appreciate you being here and, and spending time with us. Uh, we'd open up the dais at this point in time. If you want to address council or myself. Uh, these would be for non-agenda items. We'll give you a three-minute time limit. Realize we can't take action on those tonight because they aren't on the agenda. That would be a violation of open meetings law if we took action. Uh, also, if you'd like to comment on any item in the consent agenda, now would be the time. So we'll go ahead and open it up for non, non-agenda items. Buddy, all right, we will move on. Uh, item number seven is our consent agenda. We have expenditures, tax abatements. Uh, April fourth, twenty twenty-four minutes of the special city council meeting, the April fourth, twenty twenty-four minutes of the regular city council meeting. We have a new five-day Class C retail alcohol license for your private bartender, ten fifty-one North Avenue, effective April twenty-fourth to twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, we have resolution approving water reclamation authority, senior bond issuance certificate. We have a resolution to approve partial payment number five to progressive structures for the Northeast Service Area Lift Station and Truck Sewer Improvements. We have a resolution approving the twenty-eighty agreement to continue membership with the Safety Coalition of Central Iowa. We have a resolution approving a rental agreement with Infomax and Light Edge to host city's server infrastructure. We have a resolution setting date for public hearing on designation of the expanded Norwalk Urban Renewal Area and on Urban Renewal Plan Amendment. We have a resolution approving acceptance of the Warren County Philanthropic Partnership Community Grant and the purchase of training equipment. Uh, we have a resolution approving Engineering Services Amendment number one for additional engineering services on the Golden Valley Drive Improvements Project. We have a resolution approving an agreement with Intradine for Social Media Archiving Services. We have resolutions uh approving pay estimates for the Norwalk Fieldhouse Project. There's four of those listed there. We have a resolution approving change order number thirteen to install painted free throw lines on the side courts at the Norwalk Fieldhouse. We have a resolution approving change order number fourteen to install wall pads on the steel columns at the city state bank Norwalk Fieldhouse, and we have monthly reports. Can I get a motion?
Well, I had a question first of all.
Quick one.
Yeah, yeah. I'm a basketball guy.
Okay.
Um, and obviously trust Rob. Um, but it's uh, one thousand seven hundred dollars to paint those free throw lines. And I do, I'm not gonna get into that stuff, but it just was a curiosity to me.
Okay. How, how about you, Esperon, now?
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. All right, you get a motion.
Motion.
Okay, so moved by Baker, seconded by Livingston. Lindsay, would you call it all?
Councilmember Minekey.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Cool.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Uh, item eight is old and new business for consideration, discussion, and possible action. So item A is a public hearing regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget. We'll open up public hearing at six twenty-three P M. So we've had four public hearings, uh, two public work sessions, and several agenda items where we've heard about the budget. Before I turn it, turn it over to Gene to give us a quick summary about where we're at with the budget, I want to state something for the public. Uh, the budget process is always open for discussion and, and debate. Citizens, taxpayers, business owners can call local elected officials at any time to discuss the budget. Frankly, it's easier to have some of those discussions away from the budget planning process. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Gene.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you mentioned, we've had a lot of meetings regarding this budget. Um, I believe this is our seventh public, uh, public meeting. Um, not to mention all this internal staff meetings that we have to compile this budget. Uh, we had a first one in July. We had one in September, two in February, one in March, and two in April. All these meetings are on YouTube. Anyone can watch them. Um, so I will be brief tonight. Um, first, uh, there's always more requests than money. So in putting this together, we try to look at the goals and priorities of the mayor and council. Staff, resident requests, and any economic development initiatives. These all come into play. Um, we try to come up with strategies we believe will serve the greater good. I thank everyone in this room for their hard work and team effort in completing this document. Um, I'll just do a few brief highlights, uh, just for public information. Norrock's assessed value increased three hundred and eighty-eight million dollars, which is about twenty-seven and a half percent, pretty, pretty good chunk of change. Um, the taxable value was just over a hundred and twenty million of that, or seventeen point eight-two percent. Factors that in, uh, affect that and why it's so much less is the rollback is one. Rollback went from fifty-four to forty-six percent, eight percent decrease, quite a bit. Um, House File seven eighteen, um, the legislature put us at a three percent gross limit because we grew over six percent. And so that, what that does is that seventeen point eight-two percent really, um, equates to fourteen point thirty-nine. It's not a perfect three percent, but limits our revenue dollars. And then our TIF funds, uh, we divert TIF funds from other tax areas to, it's called tax of my financing or economic development initiatives, and that's about a hundred and twenty-seven million of that. Dollars that we will receive is about one point six million. That's into four different tax funds, eight hundred thousand into the general fund, forty-five thousand into our insurance fund for property liability insurance, four hundred thousand into a special revenue fund for benefits for employees, and four hundred thousand into debt service to pay for capital infrastructure projects. Our C I P is just over twenty million dollars. The total budget's about sixty million dollars, twenty million of that is C I P funds. The tax rate we're going to maintain at fourteen eighty-eight didn't change. A person's assessment would have had to go up seventeen percent for them to earn, incur a tax increase due to the rollback. Average assessment in Norwalk went up a little over twenty percent, so.
For residential.
For residential, yes. Uh, finally, last thing I have to say is people, staff, that's your most expensive, long-term investment, and probably the most important in your organization. In August of twenty-three, the city hired three firefighters, a police officer, and then throughout the year, we uh, in the parking rack, we went, we took one half-time person and made it full-time. Um, and then in fiscal year twenty-five, this budget includes one police officer, um, an admin that will be shared between fire and economic development, and then a half-time library person to full-time. Well, those are kind of just the highlights. Um, again, we've met several times. If there's any questions, please let me know. Otherwise, we can open up for public hearing.
All right. Any questions for Gene? Lindsay, have we received any oral or written comments?
We have not.
Any public comment? Now's the time. Last time. All right, here we go. Now, we're gonna go ahead and close public hearing at six twenty-eight P M. Item eight B is considered approval of the fiscal year twenty-five budget. So we just had a public hearing on the item. We now need to take action to adopt the fiscal year twenty-five budget as presented or modify as necessary. Uh, does council have anything? Uh, does council have anything to add or change?
I think you've been thrown a bunch of variables this year, and you've done a dramatically fantastic job.
Yeah, I echo that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate the job you did, and all the departments really did.
Mm-hmm.
Working together, it's very seldom do you have something that there's no blood on the floor, and it seems to work pretty well here with that.
Yeah.
We are fortunate.
Appreciate that. And, you know, I think for the department heads, there were a lot of good things presented that would be nice to have. They'd be real unanswered. But right now, we just can't do it. That's my point. And they're all, none of them are bad. It's just, we gotta prioritize and get what we can do.
Right.
So, early in the process, I had, um, questions about the addition of staff, uh, in the police department. Um, I am not asking to take that out as a line item, uh, however, um, I continue to believe that this is not the right time for us to add staff to the police department. So, maybe just say that.
Okay. All right. Any other comments? Gene, you got anything else? Okay. Any public comment? We'll open it up again. All right.
Second.
All right, so I got a motion by Baker, seconded by Livingston. Any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Mineke?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item eight C is resolution approving the City of Norwalk fiscal year twenty-four re-estimated and fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget transfers. So this is normal procedure. This time of year when approving the budget, uh, this specifies what monies are being transferred between funds and why we're doing the transfer. Gene?
To follow up with that, mostly or mainly, these transfers come from TIF for our debt service payments. It helps keep our debt service levy down by using TIF funds for those purposes. Uh, enterprise funds for any debt repayment, principal and interest, we do transfers for that. And then our lost fund pays for a lot of things. We transfer into capital or general operations for that.
Okay.
That's the majority of them.
All right, discussion comments from council? Public comment?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Livingston, seconded by Baker. Any further discussion? Lindsay, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Brown? Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Mineke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item eight D is considered approval of water availability charges based on meter size. Gene, I'm gonna watch this.
Uh, this one is either, I think it's pretty cut and dry. Either you order or you're not. Um, and I'm not asking, uh, that it take place tonight. I'm asking that happen when we do our utility rate increases, and I'll be bringing those May sixteenth for the first reading. But, um, just a brief overview about water meters, uh, we currently charge six dollars and fifty cents per month. Water ba-, water availability charge regardless of the size of meter. So resident versus, um, a Michael Foods, for instance, they pay the same amount. Uh, and to give you an idea.
They pay the same amount just for access to water.
Just for, uh, just to, for availability, yes, access.
The meters are obviously much more expensive.
Yeah.
A meter size determines the amount of water that can flow to a home or business. Larger meters can place a greater demand on the system and are more expensive. The city pays for all the water meters. Uh, in the city, the exception of anything that's four inches or larger, we usually have the businesses pay for those. The cost to provide larger volumes of water drives the need for larger pumps, larger above-ground storage. And then these things drive up the cost for all ratepayers. So the intent of this change is for larger meter users to pay more for those higher expenses rather than spreading it out among all users. Um, my research and my discussions with other, um, cities in the metro and actually just looking at other cities around the country. This is very common practice. Um, it's often considered the most fair and equitable cost recovery practice for water and wastewater rates and charges. Uh, we did comparisons of other metro cities. The charges vary quite a lot, but flows can vary from system to system. Not all systems are the same. You know, in my agenda statement, Ankeny charges quite a bit for theirs, um, their tax rate is really low, so can figure out how they maybe make up some of that. But we were looking at kind of making incremental increases, putting this in place. Uh, we have some larger users. I have that. I do have that number. We have six hundred ninety-four just on one inch. So our basic is three-quarter inch, and then we have six hundred ninety-four people on one inch, twenty-nine on one and a half, fifty-seven on two inch, we have one three-inch, seven-four-inch. Actually, take that back. That three-inch was wrong. That was incorrect. Uh, seven-four-inch and then two-eight-inch meters.
So, I have a question. Um, utilities, same whether they're electric, gas, water, sewer. They're all a variable cost. So when you make the statement that it's more fair this way, if it's a variable cost, the people that use the most will get charged the most. Now, if we're not covering our expenses with our variable rates, then we need to probably adjust those. But I'm not seeing that these, I know the trend now is to do all this availability. I, at home, it's like all four items. I wasn't even there a month, and it's forty dollars. Um, the trend everywhere is going to this availability because it's a backdoor increase, and that way they can still say, oh, but our rates are really low. Whatever. We need to make it, it's more fair, no matter what you say, if it's a variable rate. The people using the most are gonna pay the most. The people using the least are gonna pay the least. Like I said, we might need to adjust the rates. The the availability, pretty soon, it'll be, uh, uh, fire department availability, police protection availability, fees of a hundred dollars each. Snow, snow, snow clearing availability fees for a hundred dollars. Those are in your property tax. The availability of the sewer, availability of your water, availability of everything is is in your property tax. We need to charge for the actual goods that we're selling now for the enterprise funds anyway. Let's fix it, but, and I understand that it's easier on this way with budgeting. Um, but at the same time, let's get it back to charging the people that are using it. Um, and not charging the people that aren't. It it's just, it's part of your property tax.
I guess I don't understand how this isn't doing that.
Easy. I have, for example, we'll, I'll just use the, uh, three-quarter inch. I pay twelve months a year. I only use it three months a year. I am one of the very least users of irrigation water, for example.
Okay.
That is, there is no, there's not the correlation. The people with the four-inch water main obviously are gonna be having the most massive water bills on earth. But if they are causing extra charges for pumps and availability for towers and everything else, then we need to jack those rates up, not give a discount for large water users.
Okay, but.
That's what it amounts to.
But isn't this proposal to to do that, to increase the fees for people who have the four-inch and increase the fees? I mean, I guess I don't understand.
It's a fixed cost versus a variable cost. Why, why differentiate that? We already have it. It's measured. It's precise.
Okay, but.
It's in place.
But what I.
Trying to reinvent the wheel with a new backdoor method.
What I understand is that we're not, we're not changing that part. We're not, this doesn't change the water usage cost, or or this is just simply, you have a bigger meter.
A backdoor fee.
The logic is, um, on a five-eight or three-quarter inch meter, thirty gallons per minute can go through that. An eight-inch meter, thirty-two hundred gallons can go through that at one time. So they can just generate that much more water to be used. Therefore, they need a bigger pump, a bigger meter, I could say. And it just, that's the logic. You know, more gallons per minute can go through that.
And likewise, aren't they charged per gallon? Okay, so their water bill would be extraordinarily, I mean, huge.
But in addition to their water bill, we are also paying for these bigger meters. We're already absorbing that cost.
Yeah.
It's time to pass that cost on to them.
We're, if we're subsidizing them, that's one thing, which we shouldn't be. We shouldn't be selling them for cost. Typically, cities sell them for a large profit. Evidently not here.
Another way to look at it, and Wayne, I'm kind of stepping into the engineering realm, so you may have to correct me. Having, if your entire community had nothing but these smaller meters, it means that the pump that we had to pay for for this western feeder, those large pumps could be smaller. The pipes coming to this community potentially could be smaller. The idea is those larger meters that all of a sudden needs to draw a large amount of water. You have to upsize other components of the system.
And that's fine. I was just gonna say, why are we giving a discount to large users when it sounds like they're causing this red headache? I think we need to refocus, is all my point is. And we're just gonna raise the rates here. That's fine, right? But the other way, you can't say is more fair or less fair. The other fair is absolutely fair because it's a variable cost. Charged directly to a person that's using it.
Look, I would just add, maybe to, I don't know if this happens a lot, but the problem, you just pay off large water users. Do you pay that to your end charge? You may have somebody with an eight-inch meter that needs a large volume of water in a short span of time. They don't need a lot of water, maybe a lot of water for a short time. They actually may use less water than somebody with a two-inch meter that runs it all day long. Who may not pay as much then if we did all the large water user.
And that.
The larger, like the, the, Gene was saying, the larger meters can flow so much more. That's what causes problems, the large, it's the pain as well, and over time, they're both issues.
Yeah, but this isn't right.
That's a good.
This is one part of it. This is not, we're just basing it off of the size of the meter. This is what, right, right? That's what I'm trying to sort out in my head. This is one part of it. They are still being charged for their water use, whether they use the, for one month, use excess, or the whole year use excess. They're still being charged for that water uses. This is just a different, different part of it.
Right, yeah.
It is, and to piggyback on what Wayne said, let's say that user that only uses a large amount once a month.
Mm-hmm.
And because they've got a large, uh, meter, they're shoveling a lot of water through the system all at once. This charge that Gene is talking about is a monthly fee. So the availability that water for them to use on a monthly basis then helps the city recoup those costs.
His, hi- his answer is what I was looking for. I had, I did not, that's what I was wanting from him. I feel much better about this now. I still think it's going to evolve as every city has the wrong direction. But at least that has a good reason for this. We'll eventually end up with police protection at a hundred a month.
Well, you know, partly too, with that new water facility, he, we have to pay for capacity, and if you have a bunch of big pipes or a big meter. You have to prepare for those to be used, and we have to pay for that fixed cost for that capacity. So that is the cost that has to get passed along eventually.
Okay.
Molly, the other thing was, it seems like we should have more than seven hundred eighty-nine meters in this town.
We do.
Okay.
I meant of.
This is just the same.
Above the three-quarter inch.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean.
So everything else is under.
Fifty-one hundred meters.
Okay.
Total, or fifty-two hundred, something like that.
That are really small.
Yeah, that's just the ones that are over the basic.
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess you could probably argue too, Wayne, that one big user could cause our, us to go over capacity if they in one day use so much, and that's happened. So just another argument, but it's a philosophy thing.
We could, yeah.
Again, my research shows it's very fair and equitable and.
I, I got no problem with it. We're looking to do it, right? But one of the other things I know we talked about over the last few years is the goal of trying to incentivize, right? Uh, so they don't, we don't have excess water usage, so we run into the penalty. Because we've done that a couple of times where we run up so much water for a brief period of time, and we had to pay even extra for it. Right?
We played a.
So, uh, a strategy, maybe this will do some of that. I don't know. But I doubt it, right? Maybe it will. I hope so. But maybe keep in the back of your minds, even with doing this, can we link this a little bit more to encourage less usage?
This doesn't do anything to encourage less usage.
Yeah, this is.
It's gonna cost more.
Exactly, that's right. And that, that's the main tool that we've got is to charge more, but it doesn't help.
Come up with something else. Give a variable cost, you absolutely reward less usage. That was my entire point.
Yeah.
I, I think.
I'm an old account.
I think one thing to take into consideration is, you know, cities can't charge to make a profit.
Right.
Uh, they can't, you know, manipulate, make higher charges to try to limit somebody's use. I mean, the charge that you, the council sets, and when you're at, when you'll be asked to pass this ordinance, uh, the council really has to find that the cost of providing these different size valves, that the charge that you're charging is reasonably related to expenses that the city's incurring as a result of providing that service. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
So it's not like we can just say, everybody else does it, so we're gonna do it. I mean, there's gonna have to be some findings here and, and, um.
A dollar since we can.
Well, I'm sure we can find reasons why, but it's, it's, you know, what we're talking about, okay, we're gonna use this just as kind of a penalty to stop big users from using, so that's not a proper use of, of, of. Of charges.
But passing on increased expenses.
Yes.
If they cause us to have increased.
Absolutely, yes, that's right.
Yeah. Okay, Wayne's brought me out of it. Never mind.
Other discussion, questions, comments from council?
Both of them.
Right? Any public comment?
Uh, what's average size for a house? Inch-wise?
Half inch.
Three-quarter.
Quarter inch.
Three-quarter. What is with the, with the irrigation meter?
What's with the one door?
Oh, irrigation. No, just go with that answer. That was his question. That was the answer.
Yeah. Any other public comment? During none, I got a motion from Livingston. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Cool. Any other further discussion? Lindsay, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Mineke?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Good job, Gene. Uh, item eight E, resolution initiating a zoning amendment referring to proposals to the Norwalk Planning and Zoning Commission and setting a public hearing regarding the proposal to rezone seven twenty-nine Jackson Street from R F Founder's Residential District to C four Founder's Business District. So this starts the process of a rezoning at seven twenty-nine Jackson Street. Uh, Luke Paris, got anything to add?
Yeah, um, so seven twenty-nine Jackson Streets, uh, the corner of Jackson North Avenue, right across from City Hall, um, adjacent to Harvey's. Luke has shown it on the screen there, uh, via Google Maps. Uh, Chrissy Joseph, uh, approached the city about the potential of buying the house and the property, um, tearing down the house and building a new commercial building on the site. Um, so doing so would require a rezoning. Um, we talked with them and suggested that, uh, C four rezoning would probably be the best. It, uh, matches up with the zoning up the street into the Founder's District. Um, so this would kind of be extending that Founder's District down. Um, it's kind of a unique property. There's a commercial to the east and west of it, uh, commercial to the north, as well as, uh, some duplex or residential to the north. And then, uh, it's kind of the start of the Founder's District to the south, um, on Jackson Street. So, um, lots of different land uses around, but overall, as a staff, we feel like it would mit, fit with the corridor um, of North Avenue going to commercial. Um, in your staff analysis, I did kind of give some history of the whole area and uh, basically, since the fifties, the area has been slowly changing from residential to commercial along North Avenue, and um, we feel like this would kind of be the last piece on the south side of the road to that. Um, so again, this would start the process. We would then go forward and do the appropriate, appropriate public notices and public hearings at P and Z and then at council. Uh, I believe Christie was in the audience too, if you have questions of her.
So those two lots to the west?
Yes.
Those are zoned what right now?
Those are currently C one to the west.
Okay.
And Luke, what options are there if council doesn't approve this?
If council were to not initiate the rezoning, then the property owner could still initiate it, but. If council were to not initiate the rezoning, then the property owner could still initiate it by obtaining, uh. A petition from fifty percent of the property owners within two hundred feet.
Right. I ask because I. We've just started doing these. Council initiated rezonings, so I just wanted to remind. Counsel what the options are. Discussion your questions, comments from council?
Yeah, I would inquire of the. Requestor.
Have you talked to, I know you haven't had to yet. Have you talked to the? Other housing?
Can you come up here so that you're on the microphone and state your names and address?
Christie Dejosa, hello everyone. Um, yes, that's the plan. So I've talked to. Groups of you guys a couple of times, kind of just getting guidance as to when I should do that.
Okay.
And so I believe my understanding is after, maybe either after this meeting or after planning and zoning, um, that that'd be the appropriate time to talk to the housing. The neighbors in the immediate vicinity. Yep. Yes.
Anything else?
I might just add that general rule of thumb, whenever we communicate with citizens, it's never soon enough. So earlier is always better.
Yeah, I think the goal is before they would get a letter. Right, that that would, yeah.
Any public comment? All right, making a most approved resolution?
Second.
Hey, so motion by Baker, seconded by Brown. Any further discussion? Lindsay, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Livingston? Yes. Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right. Item eight F, resolution approving purchase agreement with diligent H C C L L C for purchase of lot one of Hughes Century Crossing. Flat seven for the library development. So we've had a presentation about purchasing of land for future libraries. Uh, this land is at the far edge of Norwalk Central on Chatham. Jean Strabel, anything to add?
Uh, not really. We've discussed it before and if you have any questions or comments, I'm happy to take those. Otherwise, um, we have negotiated and everyone seems to be happy to move forward.
All right, Jim, uh, is everything in order for proper closing and other legal requirements?
Yeah, we got a, yeah, purchase agreements in place. As I understand the, uh, it has been before the library board because, uh, it will be library property and it's using. Uh. They're, they're using funds from a, a donation. Purchased the real estate, so this will be, oh, it's held in the city's name. It, it takes votes of the city council and the library board for that.
Right, so just for clarification, I understand all that, but you said it will be library property, isn't it? It's city property technically. I'm not, I don't mean to split hairs, but I just want to make sure I understand.
It's, you are absolutely correct. It'll, it'll be titled the city name. One unique thing about this property, which I should be. Uh, that is good to discuss is that since we're using funds from a donation. That donation was given to the city with limitations. So it's gotta be for library purposes. So some people have, have said, you know, this is fairly large tract property and maybe at some point in time, all of it won't be used for the library. Well, since it's, since it was used, since funds were used. From a restricted donation for library purposes, if the city were to say, okay, let's, let's take off. A third of this and give it to Park and Rec, put a splash pad there or something like that. Uh, at that point in time, the city would have to figure out a means for reimbursing. That donation. So that it would be preserved for some other purpose. Uh, that would be library related. But at this point in time, the library board has found that this is, this land to be purchased for library purposes and as long as. Library board says for library purposes, we can have that amount of ground, but it's not. City ground to the extent that we can step in sometime five years from now and say, okay, we're gonna build a library, but we're only use half the ground. We're gonna keep the other half. Okay.
Whatever questions, comments, this council? I hope, I hope the residents don't hold the library board responsible for overspending for the land. Knowing that this is commercial land. That could be used for commercial. My old, it's my old, uh, thing. I, I hope that it doesn't have a backlash. It's like. You could have spent four hundred, but instead you spent seven hundred and yet now you need a contribution. I just, I'm having a tough time. Anything else?
I think the location is an excellent location. And we could save money going further out, but it wouldn't be convenient for the public. And all those things are balanced.
I also think the location is, is an interesting one, a potentially fun one as well.
And while the city can't put a splash pad, the library could do something like an outdoor, um, like, you know, scavenger. Time that ends in splash.
An aquatic reading center.
An outdoor, there you go. I, I, I get.
All right. Motion. Any public comment? No, you got it. Any public comment? Hey, so I got a motion by Livingston. Yeah. You want a second?
Yeah.
Okay, so a motion by Livingston, seconded by Brown. Uh, any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item eight F is a resol, no, I, I just did that one. Eight G. The second reading of an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan of the city of Norwalk Iowa by changing land at eight eight hundred County Line Road, eight eight hundred Gracie Lane. Uh, from future agricultural reserve to commercial industrial flex. So at our last meeting, we had a public hearing. First reading for this amendment to our comprehensive plan to allow commercial industrial flex at that address. Luke, anything to add?
No, sir.
All right, any discussion comments from council or public comments?
Motion?
Right.
Second.
Motion by Livingston, seconded by Brown. Lindsay, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item eight H. Is a second reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Norwalk Iowa by rezoning eight eight hundred County Line Road. Eight eight hundred Gracie Lane from R E one, single family resident rural estates, sorry, to C one community commercial. So at our last meeting, we had public hearing and first reading for this zoning change at eight eight hundred County Line Road to C one commercial. Community commercial. Luke, anything to add?
No, sir.
All right, any questions, discussion from council or public comment?
Second.
Motion by Baker, seconded by Livingston. Lindsay, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston's, Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yeah.
All right, motion carries. Item eight I, it's the second reading of an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Norwalk Iowa. Related to the regulations, definitions and terminology for the city's floodplain development regulations. So at our last meeting, we had public hearing and first reading for this change to our floodplain development regulations. Luke, anything to add?
Nope.
Any discussion, questions, council? Public comment? Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Cool, seconded by Minneke. Lindsay, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Item eight J, it's the second reading of an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Norwalk Iowa by amending the Hughes Century Crossing. Plan unit development land use parcel E, allowing seven point seven three acres north of Chatham Avenue and east of. Eight, and east eighteenth street, sorry, to permit those uses as allowed in land use parcel G. And to permit water tower as a principal use. So at our last meeting, we had a public hearing. First reading of this zoning change to parcel E in the Hughes Century Crossing P U D. Uh, parcel E is at the far east and north of Chatham. Luke, anything to add?
No, sir.
All right, any questions, comments, discussion from council or public comments? Make a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Cool, seconded by Livingston. Lindsay, would you please call a roll?
Councilmember Livingston?
Yes.
Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Would anybody like to have a recess before we go next slide?
No.
All right, away we go. Item eight K, resolution approving design and procedural considerations for the ridge at Echo Valley. Reconstruction project. Okay, so there's several items in this resolution that I'm gonna quickly highlight. Uh, understand that I'm gonna go over what staff has proposed for these items. Council can discuss these and make changes if desired. So first topic. Uh, irrigation systems found in the right of way. So installing these.
Can you go to the resolution, please?
Yes. There you go. So installing these in the right of way is done at the owner's risk. Uh, because they, they aren't permitted, they aren't a permitted use in the right of way. So when irrigation systems are found in the right of way and damaged, it's gonna be the homeowner's responsibility for the repair. However, if irrigation systems are found within the construction easement, uh, that's on the. Homeowner's property then, and we damage them, it's gonna be the responsibility of the city to repair that damage. Second has to do with mailboxes. Uh, while there are nicely construction, constructed mailboxes in the right of way. The city is only gonna compensate the homeowner as if we would, it's as we would if the snowplow would hit the mailbox. And with that seventy-five dollars. It's important to note that Wayne did research the possibility of salvaging the mailboxes. Uh, which would still be at the homeowner's expense. Wayne can provide more info when, when I turn it over to him. One last important item, the post office has changed their policy. Uh, since our last assessment project, so those cluster mailboxes like we did on McCondon and Lakewood. Uh, are no longer a requirement for projects like this. Homeowners are advised to remove any items from the right, from the right of way that they would like to have reserved. Third issue deals with the medians in three different areas. I think I'll let Wayne address the medians in just a minute. Uh, fourth has to do with how the sidewalk path is going to be assessed. Uh, they will be assessed by linear feet, which will be the same as past projects. Fifth deals with a couple of driveways that will be changing if we modify the medians and I'm gonna let Wayne address this one too. So Wayne. Take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. We're having a meeting with the public at the end of the month, um, so we thought it'd be important to bring these to council ahead and make sure we're all on the same page. Uh, this gives us time to adjust plans if we decide to change course. April twenty-ninth, letters went out Monday to the neighborhood. Uh, probably the, the biggest impact of residents will be the irrigation. I think every home out there likely has irrigation. Um, I did make a. A crude graphic, I think Luke has it, um. And I show on some of the issues we'll run into. So the home on the left, you'll see there, that would be one where they have a, I'm assuming. This is not accurate. I drew a blue line where I'm just a scenario that's irrigation line. Irrigation line would be outside of the right of way. We don't have a construction easement there. We're gonna send them a letter to get their, get anything out of the right of way that they'd like to salvage, but then that'd be their decorative mailbox, any landscaping. Uh, the one on the far right. Would be a home where we send them the same letter. They have decorative mailbox, but they have irrigation in the right of way. They would be required at their cost to get that out of the right way. To get it out of the construction zone. The middle home is one where we would, we need a construction easement, so that's something we would participate in relocation cost of the irrigation. Because putting it just on their property isn't adequate for us. We need also a lot of five foot or ten foot easement. About. Two thirds of the homes out there, we need easements on, five foot or ten foot easement on.
What do you need those for, Wayne?
The main reason, and I believe Jeff Rouse with W H K S was on the call too and he can chime in, but the main reason is we're providing access throughout the project. The ten foot granular road is right on the property line. Uh, it's mainly gonna be for transitioning, cleaning up the, our work and then transitioning grading back. Um, to their property. It's not for. We're not moving the sidewalk or the road or anything. It's mainly just a grading and operations. We need, we need a few extra feet. We're proposing in the resolution. That we, um. We wanna try to treat the irrigation system where we're just gonna compensate the homeowner. We're gonna try to figure out the rough cost for some of that work and just say, we're gonna. Compensate you one thousand dollars, wherever that number is in the. Um, temporary construction easement, so that would be spelled out in it that we'd bring forward later. I don't wanna try to manage contractors out there, keeping track of their cost. This is, so the way we're proposing is similar to how we did the Beard Street Sewer. We just put them out in there. But they wanna hire their neighbor to replumb it, or if you wanna hire whoever to do it, they can do it.
Are you lost me on the front, uh, the one on the left? You described the other two, but what do you say about the one on the left?
So that would be the best case scenario for everybody there. The irrigation will be outside of the right way and we don't need an easement.
Irrigation's in the right way.
No, well, that one would.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I see, but yeah, okay. So that does.
Basically what you're saying is that. They've got the right to have the irrigation where it is. But we need it out of the way because we gotta tear it up there.
Actually, don't have the right to have the irrigation where it is, but we have it.
The right to tear it. Where, where we're trying to get the additional easements.
On the middle one, for instance.
And the, the one on the right hand side, now they don't have the right to have it in the right way. But the one in the middle is an example, right?
So are you gonna stop them from putting it back in after this is all finished? We have.
Well, probably not because it's their property.
Right, that's what I mean.
But the, the point is that, you know, there'll be an unnatural expense here that's caused because we're tearing it free up.
That's, there's a bigger discussion here and I don't know if we wanna get into it, but I don't know if we're really even, I don't know if our code forbids it in the right way. I think maybe it might be more of, if it's in the way though, it's at your risk to put it there, but that might be a different.
And I, I think that's fine.
We'll tackle that when we go, there's zoning.
It makes sense.
And I think it makes sense.
And just a clarification, Ed, um, if that irrigation is within the right of way, then it's not actually on their property. It's on city property.
Right, if it's in the right of way, yeah.
And I looked up, for example, West Des Moines, the verbiage is very similar, uh, at, at their own risk. Everything in all of the other cities were at your own peril, at your own risk. So it's at our risk, it gets ripped up or, as he said, capped, uh, cut and capped.
I had a, I had a question from a resident. If Wayne, do you think that it would be difficult if? So Brian mentioned that all of the irrigation systems out there, he believes they all go into the right of way. Is there any value in the city saying? Hey, we'll bring in a contractor that maybe through economies of scale. Could work with all these property owners, uh, just to make it easier, or is that just? Something we don't wanna get involved in?
I would for not. The problem we run into then is we own that. If it breaks in four years, they're gonna say our contractor didn't get that job.
Good suggestion. You're smart, Alex. You wanna talk about mailboxes?
Yes, sir. Our code forbids large decorative mailboxes in arterial, arterial, the major collectors. They are allowed in residential areas. But our policy also is if there is a, uh, damaged mailbox, we put back a four by four post or we'll compensate the homeowner seventy-five dollars. If they would like to do it, replace it themselves. That's what we're proposing here is we're gonna have in the. Plans, contractor will have a, uh, whoa, let me back up. We'll send a letter out to homeowners telling them, get your irrigation out of there, put your landscaping and your mailbox if you wanna salvage it. Contractors I talked to said people are way too picky. We tried to put them back, something happened, so they would bid rebuilding it, which would be a thousand dollars for each one. So he, they recommended we, uh, ask the homeowners to move it if they wanted, otherwise we'll take them out and dispose of it. We'll put up a four by four post with a generic mailbox. Or if the homeowner would like to do their own, we'll compensate them seventy-five dollars. That's been our practice for any damaged mailbox on city. Uh, due to the city in the past.
So I just wanna make sure that it's clear. I hear what you're saying. It sounds clear to me. I'm not sure it's, would be clear. Everybody. We see, in the heat of it. I wanna make sure it's clear that if you want it salvaged, you remove it. If the, if we remove it, it will not be in a way that it can be salvaged. Right? I wanna make sure that it's clear that what, if we do the destruction, we are not gonna take care. To make sure that there's not damage. We will destruct it as the quickest and most efficiently possible. Right? That's the intent.
Yep.
I just wanna make sure that that's clear.
I have a question as far as logistically, how would we know when to, uh, have that removed? And then do we find our own? Mailbox to pound in?
And then do we find our own mailbox to pound in because we won't know when it's actually going to occur? Or how, how would we know what month is gonna happen?
We'd have, there's gonna be lots of communication between homeowners and the city, and you wouldn't wanna do it. We would have to have the, we wanna award the contract to a contractor. Before we'd want you to rip out your mailbox, but yes, you'd have to probably put up a temporary one then.
Okay.
I agree, sir.
And then, and, uh, as we're talking about that logistically, I saw it's like in four sections, maybe I'm jumping to that, but. Four sections, we're talking about just section one occurring this fall, and you can't pour or do anything over the winter. So we're talking about like a year to a year and a half out for some of this, right? Or what are we?
Yeah, we, again, we'd have to communicate. There probably wouldn't be a need to remove your mailbox. If you're up toward the entrance to our community. We're gonna win the word by faith. We're not gonna have the contractor come in and.
It looked really well planned out. I have to, it, it. I've gotten no more calls. I mean, it's, it's pretty well planned.
I wanna mention one thing, you mentioned the post office. I will say they are a huge variable, and I would not, I'm not confident on how this shakes out. We're planning for the past, but even on our Gold Valley project, we're already getting curveballs from the post office though. Um, just, we're planning for what the best we can do, for all we know right now.
Because right now are the mailboxes in Echo. By, like, in the front yard. So what I mean by that is are mailboxes on both sides of the streets? I thought, sorry, mailboxes are on both sides of the streets. They're all on one.
Yeah.
So you, for instance, might have two mailboxes, yours and the person across the street.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. On their question, the mailbox is like the temporary. In the past, I think what we've done is put up temporary mailbox outside. But the effect did.
Didn't we put like cluster?
Yeah. So I imagine you're looking at doing the same thing.
Yes, sir. That'd be the intent. Uh, the medians. I had a, paired it up in here. I think everybody's familiar with that. There's an entrance median coming off of Echo Ridge Trail that we have problems in the winter if they're, uh, drifting in. Yep, that one stands. We've moved forward with removing that in the plan. The other two medians are more the cul-de-sac areas. WHKS, we shot the homeowners, was pretty split on the, uh, whether the desire to keep them or remove them. Turning movements, I know probably works has problems in there, moving, plowing snow, the turning movements, show fire trucks, can't make those turning movements. Uh, those two things along with really a neutral position from residents, we've moved forward with doing a traditional cul-de-sac and getting rid of the decorative medians. That shows, uh, the concept that we're, the engineers are designing. You can see in the background, the, the old, current what's out there now. Jumping ahead to the last item, we talked about driveways and the assessment, so. There's two properties that could end up with a larger driveway because they're in that neck area, the cul-de-sac. That's a good example there of one that's fair, would have been fairly short, but rad in that red area. That driveway assessment right now is fifty five hundred. It will probably be around three thousand and twenty five hundred if we weren't changing the design. So we proposed for two properties to look at, both options and assess the lesser of the two. Um, that one would be less, and then there's one on the other, cul-de-sac, it's rash, it's, it's gonna be really close, but there's more or less, it's pretty marginal, but.
Seems very fair what you propose there. There's good.
A change in design the city initiated through logistics or cloud trucks and fire trucks, a sign of homeowner request. Um, so that's why we're considering that change. Uh, the last item.
Wayne? Wayne, just as a clarification, the right of way line would not change.
Correct. Last meeting homeowner requested we change how we're assessing the sidewalks, shared use paths. That's why I make sure we're still, we're not doing that. We're doing by front H, like curb and gutter, same as Golden Valley Drive, so. If you wanted to make a change, we'd like to know now, um, so we can make those note, assessment plan schedule.
I am, um, really appreciative of this. Explanation and the succinctness and. What, whether we ultimately approve it or not, I appreciate the presentation more than I can tell you.
Good. Other discussion?
If council's on board with the recommendations and approval of the agenda statement, would give us, uh, this path forward.
What other questions or just questions? Have any public comment?
Just came here to look pretty.
I like it.
Uh, can I get a most approved resolution? Okay, you have a second?
Brian needs a second.
Who, who did the second? No, Ed did. So motion by Livingston, seconded by Cool. Uh, any further discussion? Lindsay, would you call a roll?
Councilmember Minneke?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Cool?
Yeah.
Livingston?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Uh, let's see, number, item number nine is future agenda items. So the purpose of this is for council to give direction but to staff by way of motion. To have items placed on future agendas. Uh, this is not for discussion of the merits, so the subject matters. Just to get it on the agenda so that we can then discuss the merits of the subject matter. Anybody have anything? Hearing none, we'll move on. Item number ten, council inquiries and staff updates. Luke?
The only item that I have, this is a draft, um, our, we have six members. Between staff and council and mayor that are going to DC. Well, that's at the beginning of May. Make a trip out there to meet with our, uh, delegation, uh, Joni Ernst. Doug Frasley and Mary Miller Meeks. Um, so we'll meet with each one of them. We go to a few different, uh. Events that the Des Moines Partnership will hold. Part of this, what I'm showing on the screen is a draft document. We gotta update the map. Um, this needs to be reviewed by that contingency, but I just wanted to get that in front of the full council so you could see. Kind of the main message that we hope to pass along to, uh, to those folks out in DC. Which, uh, the main one being our priority southwest corridor, it really talks about a number of things. Center sewer that we're gonna run, future transportation corridor, and even an interchange at some point in time in the future. Uh, and then other objectives being those four bullet points. Once this is finalized, we'll get that out to the full council so everybody has a chance to review it. Any questions on that?
MPO this afternoon said that, uh, the highway five interstate, only they called it the, uh.
Purple Heart.
Purple Heart Highway, yeah, that's one of their big pushes on the DC trip.
Awesome.
Thanks, so.
That's a good deal. Anything else?
Uh, nope, that's all I have. All right, Jack.
So, um, this, earlier this week or last weekend, I was, um, tagged on a Facebook post. Um, about the water runoff. One of the creeks that feeds Lake Colchester. Um, I didn't actually realize that I was tagged on it until my husband, who was also tagged on it, uh, said, oh, yeah, you were tagged on it. Um, I removed the tag because, um, I don't have any firsthand knowledge. I don't know exactly where the pictures were taken, and I don't know that there is a problem with the runoff. From that area. There may be. I don't have any knowledge of it. So I just wanted to. Make that a record that I don't, didn't really. Appreciate being tagged. I think the point was, hey. Councilmember Livingston, take a look at this. Um, but I didn't find there to be enough information for me to have any kind of educated opinion about it. So, in the future, I just encourage people who have complaints about that stuff to say where it is.
Yeah.
And to call. Call the city, so that we can go look and address it. Yeah, so that's all.
I saw the post too, and I, I was. Looking at, it's like, where is that?
Right.
And you, you really don't know. Is it even in the city? I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Can't tell.
No, you can't tell. And I did write, there are several creeks, streams, waterways in the US that feed. Um. Excuse me, that feed Lake Colchester, um. But I don't know that, I don't know where, if at all. Runoff is actually an issue. I just don't know. And until we have, I, it's my belief that unless and until. LVA or Lake Rec does some s- studies of the water and shares that information with us, I don't know that it is. A problem. I'm not saying it's not. Again, I'm not naive, not saying that it's not an issue, but we need more information.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, good. Jason?
Lindsay?
Uh, just a reminder that the twenty third Tuesday night, uh, from five thirty to seven thirty is the legislative roundtable here at City Hall. For any of you that wanna attend.
Thanks, Rob.
Cool opens May thirty. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Jean?
Just a quick thank you for approving the alcohol license for ten fifty one North Avenue next weekend. It is for the library's Caddy Stacks fundraiser, and so if you would like to come and play mini golf throughout the library, please do. So get your tickets at the library or online.
Awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you. Jean?
Uh, just to let you know, I got a email from a finance counterpart in the metro area that there's a bill. In the Senate, we're having a subcommittee to my, subcommittee meeting tomorrow. I don't know if you've heard anything, Luke, but. One of the things is methodologies for determining property taxes and property tax assessment limitations, so.
I have not, that's a new one.
I think this is a hundred day. I thought they were gonna be done, so anyway, uh, I hope that doesn't amount to anything, but I just got that. Email not too long ago, so.
Yeah, I think I heard they were gonna go another week. So.
Anyway.
Great.
Um, and I'm heading out of the country Saturday, so. You need anything, call Luke.
Are you coming back?
I hope not. Yes, I'm coming back.
I promised not to bring up meetings.
All right, Jean?
Just a couple interviews to wrap up for the dog case set we put out in the media and then. Some charges a good place, working with the county attorney to. Charge the most appropriate and not. Put out fifty seven cases of the same thing, just to clog up the court system. So when you see it, there'll be purposely a limited number of charges, even though there could be about sixty four total. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Lieutenant Cross?
Um, as you mentioned earlier, uh, the fire department did apply for a grant through the Warren County Film Propic. And we were awarded four thousand and nine hundred ninety six dollars. That we will be using to purchase some training equipment for EMS, uh, so we just wanted to give a shout out to Lieutenant Settles and. Other staff and thank them for getting that done.
Awesome. All right, thank you. Wayne?
Nothing.
Uh, Tony?
Nothing else, Mayor, thanks.
All right, Carrie?
Nothing tonight.
Luke?
Nothing.
All right, Ed?
No, we had a MWA board meeting the other night. The only thing we did really was we changed law firms and kinda contracted with a different law firm. And, uh, that was about it.
Okay, thank you. George? Brian?
I'd like to thank, uh, Wayne for letting me bend his ear. I had, I had, uh, I spent hours. On the phone with numerous questions and concerns and stuff, and. He did very well, and, and poor Jim. Jim too. And Luke, I, I don't know, I'm sure I bothered everybody.
So it says on the, in the bus on the way back?
No, I was, it was just for the last month regarding the ridge and everything else.
All right, sounds good.
Yeah.
Nothing.
Uh, the only thing I have is, is that, uh, emergency ma- Warren County Emergency Management was, have hired a new coordinator. Her name is Miranda Chadwick. She's currently with the city of Indianola, and we're still. Her start date is still a little unknown, but it's gonna be here first part of May, I believe, so. See. I'm, one of the things that I think she wants to do is come and address council and. Throughout the county, just introduce herself and. Expect that at some point in time. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, shit.
Second. Sir.
I've got several motions. So, uh, all's a favor, say aye.
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 Oh, same. We adjourn, seven twenty three PM.
All right.